Our videos.
Yes, we'll go ahead and take down the presentation and you guys can start the meeting.
Okay. I'm ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, with that, I'm going to call to order tonight's meeting of the City of Santa Rosa Planning Commission, and begin by reading this statement. Due to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Orders N dash two five dash two zero and N dash two nine hash two zero, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act and the Order of the Health Officer of the County of Sonoma to shelter in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19, the planning commissioners will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom webinar. Commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations and or practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak during item four, public comment, or during our public hearing items will be able to do so by raising their hand and will be given the ability to address the commission. So with that, I will ask for roll call, please.
Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present except Commissioner Callia.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the approval of our August thirteenth minutes. Any changes, corrections on those? Not seeing any. Those will stand as printed. And with that, we'll go ahead and move to public comments, which is a time for any member of the public to address the commission on matters of interest to the commission that are not listed tonight as a public hearing. If you wish to make a comment via Zoom, you're going to be selecting the raise hand button. If you're dialing in via telephone, you're going to dial star nine to raise your hand, and the host will allow you to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes. A little timer will appear for your, for the convenience of the speaker and viewers to see how long you have. Please unmute yourself when you're invited to do so. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open public comments and ask our host if anyone is there wishing to speak.
Chair Cisco, no one is raising their hands at this time.
Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comments and bring it back and do planning commissioners report. Any reports tonight? Vice Chair Weeks, you have a report.
Yes, I just wanted to report that on August fourteenth, there was a meeting of the subdivision committee, and at that time, we reviewed what's called the Linda Tunis Senior Apartment Complex, and it's at six hundred Acacia Lane between Mission and Middle Rankin Road on the north side. And it's going to be a twenty-six unit affordable housing complex, and the request was to divide the land so that the building was on one parcel and the parking lot's on the other parcel, and that's to help with financing for the affordable units, so. And we approved it. There was no public comment.
Great. Any other commissioners wishing to report tonight? Commissioner Carter?
Yes, I attended a meeting of the Water Rays Advisory Committee this morning. One of our items was thirty-two twenty-five Mendocino, a large urban-style housing redevelopment project on the old Journeys End Trailer Park site. We saw it because it's adjacent to a creek section, Russell Creek, and the committee was generally supportive of the project, looking for ways to further integrate the creek into the project as a landscape element and potentially circulation element. I look forward to seeing it at the planning commission when it's due for its general plan changes.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to department reports.
Hello, good afternoon. I have no department report to.
Okay. Statements of abstention by commissioners. Any abstentions tonight? Okay, good. And we have no study session. We have no consent items. So with that, it will bring us to our public hearing tonight. Our first one is item ten point one, which is a public hearing on the Northern Standard Conditional Use Permit. It is an ex parte disclosure. Commissioner Carter, anything to disclose?
I have nothing to disclose on this item.
Vice Chair Weeks, anything to disclose?
I did visit the site but have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Peterson?
I also visited the site and have no other information to disclose.
Commissioner Duggan?
I visited the site and have no new information to disclose.
Commissioner Oprek?
I have nothing to disclose on this matter.
Okay, and I also have no information to disclose. So with that, we will go on to our staff report, which will be given tonight by Christine Timmons. Come in.
Yes, thank you, Chair Cisco, members of the planning commission. This is Christine Timmons, senior planner. And item ten point one is a request for a major conditional use permit for a cannabis retail facility unknown as Northern Standard located at twenty-two twenty Mercury Way. The applicant proposes a nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square foot building, brand-new building, on a vacant lot, and the request is for a retail dispensary with delivery within seven hundred and eighty-one square feet of that building, manufacturing within, non-volatile manufacturing within four thousand two hundred and forty-nine square feet of that new structure, and four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four square feet of distribution. So those three uses within that new building. A little bit of project history. On May third, twenty eighteen, the zoning administrator actually approved plans for a thirty-two hundred square foot craft spirit distillery on the project site, but unfortunately, the project never moved forward. And on September twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, the city council approved a summary vacation of a seventeen hundred square foot public service easement located along the west property line. The applicant submitted the current application on September ninth, twenty nineteen, and it involves the major use permit that's before you and minor design review, which will be heard by the zoning administrator in September. And on June first, the application was deemed complete. Mercury Way is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, it's near the corner, the south, southwest corner of Mercury Way and Apollo Way, and it's located within, it's a big, completely vacant lot, as you can see, and it's also located within an area that's primarily designated as a business park. Some of the uses surrounding it, you have Kaiser to the north and also to the west and various industrial office-type buildings surrounding the property. Here is a proposed site plan for the new building. It's a two-story structure with associated parking lot and landscaping. And this will be heard, the design of the building and site plan will be heard by the zoning administrator on September third. Here are some elevations of the proposed new building. And some cross-sections will show how the building would be utilized as far as the different cannabis uses. Here's the first floor plan. It shows the retail area. That would be open to the public. The rest of the building would be closed to the public. Here's the second floor plan. And the applicant requests, the applicant requested that they have shorter hours and eventually increase those hours to nine AM to nine PM every day once the business is up and running. However, the nine AM to nine PM is, is what's, it's the maximum that's allowed by code for retail cannabis dispensary uses. And for that reason, staff is recommending approving this project for hours of operation between nine and nine, seven days a week. Because if, if the planning commission decides to restrict the hours, they would have to come back to amend their use permit in the future to allow for increased hours, but it's up to the planning commission if you decide to restrict the hours in any way for the retail component. And here's the breakdown of the different cannabis uses and the code requirement for parking for each of those uses and the required spaces, and the applicant is providing the exact number of spaces required, so twenty species. And as far as SEQA, the proposed project was viewed in compliance with SEQA and qualifies for a class-three categorical exemption under fifteen-three oh three, which involves the construction of small structures in an urban environment. The building is under ten thousand square feet, and for that reason, it qualifies for this exemption. It also qualifies for a class thirty-two exemption under government code fifteen-three-three-two, which is infill development, because it's an urbanized area. And the project has also been reviewed for SEQA Code Section fifteen-one-eight-three, and it qualifies for that exemption as well. With that, the Planning and Economic Development Department recommends that the planning commission, by resolution, approve a conditional use permit to allow cannabis retail facility with delivery, distribution, and non-volatile manufacturing type-one uses located at twenty-two twenty Mercury Way. Here's my contact information if anyone from the public would like to email me or call me about this project. The applicant also has a presentation prepared, and they're available. The staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have, and that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions right now of staff? Great, okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the applicant's presentation.
Hi, can everybody hear me? This is Blair Gue for Northern Standard.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So, good afternoon, Chair Cisco, Vice Chair Weeks and commissioners. Like I said, my name is Blair Gue, and my office represents Mountain Farm Labs LLC, which does business as Northern Standard. And as Ms. Tumians noted, Northern Standard submitted a conditional use permit application to conduct commercial cannabis retail, delivery, distribution, and manufacturing activities at two-two-two-zero Mercury Way here in Santa Rosa. And our hope is that today, after this presentation and based on the materials that were previously submitted, that this project will be approved for the requested conditional use permit. And of course, as Ms. Tumians noted, I'm happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. All right, so such is some basic information about the project. I'll move quickly through these first few slides because Ms. Tumians did a great job of explaining a lot about the project. But the address is two-two-zero, two-two-two-zero Mercury Way. It's in a business park zone district near the large Kaiser Permanente facility. We're proposing a new build that will be two stories and will house all of the uses previously noted and those showing on your screen. Next slide, please. For a little bit of background on the applicant, Northern Standard is a company that has existed since two thousand and sixteen and currently has operations in Alma, Colorado. The Northern Standard brand is well-known and respected in Colorado, not only for its compliant operations, but also for its high-quality products that it manufactures and sells. Given Northern Standard's years of commercial cannabis business experience, it's no stranger to operating in compliance with local and state regulations, and this will allow Northern Standard to successfully start operations in Santa Rosa without the large learning curve that often comes for first-time operators. Northern Standard is owned by David Waschenfelder, who is also, I believe, listening and present at this meeting. He is a full-time cannabis business operator as of today, but he's also a licensed attorney. And so, given David's legal background and the fact that Northern Standard has retained California attorneys to provide legal services in terms of cannabis business and compliance, Northern Standard is confident that its proposed business will not only be successful but also fully compliant. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, Northern Standard's facility will be a new building. It'll be two stories, and the property itself will include the building, the private parking lot, and landscaping that will hopefully create a tranquil environment for customers and employees alike. The applicant's goal is to create a beautiful, sleek, elegant, and energy-efficient facility that enhances the visual appeal of the currently vacant lot. And this project will also add to the organized sleek look of the surrounding business park. As Ms. Tumians mentioned, neighboring businesses are Kaiser Permanente, a large parking lot that services that building, and insurance companies, staffing agencies, and various other industrial businesses. Next slide, please. The location map, as Ms. Tumians noted, where the red X is, is where the proposed facility would be. Next slide, please. And then this is a current day photograph of what the lot looks like. So you can just see it's a vacant lot right next to the parking lot on the right of your screen. Next slide, please. When it comes to exterior design, the building design itself will include insulated metal panels that will minimize heat loss both in the winter and summer months. The panel system also allows for more color and design to enliven the facade of the building. Additionally, all entry points to the building will be protected by a roof or shading devices, and all pathways on the parcel will be planted with weather-appropriate and drought-appropriate plants. The public entrance to the retail dispensary area will be on the frontage of the building, which you can see here on the lower left-hand side of the picture that you're looking at. And that's the street frontage. Next slide, please. And here we have alternative building views. I'll call your attention to kind of the image at the bottom of your screen, which is important because it shows the employee entrance, which is the employee door kind of center, to the right of center. And then it also shows the roll-top door to the left, which has the Northern Standard big logo on it, so that you can identify it, and that will be used for the distribution area. That'll allow distribution or delivery vehicles to pull into the facility, have that door closed behind them, and then conduct any drop-offs or pickups in a very secure area. All right, next slide. Again, this is the floor plan, or excuse me, the site plan. The building footprint, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet with the parking lot that starts on the right and wraps around to the bottom of your screen. The applicant is also proposing to have parking spaces for bikes on-site. You can see towards the front of the building, near the retail area, there are bike spaces just to the left of the retail entrance. And then you also note that at the rear of the building, closer to the back parking lot, there's also additional bike parking spaces for employees. The last thing to discuss kind of about the site plan is the landscaping. Applicant has worked with a landscape architect to design a green, energy-efficient, water-efficient, and accessible landscape plan. Applicant's goal is to create a beautiful, serene environment through landscaping by using drought-resistant native and low-maintenance plantings. Next slide, please. So just a quick breakdown of the uses, the first being distribution, approximately four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four square feet for the distribution, circulation areas. This will be closed to the public as required by local and state law. And the employee entrance will be used on the side, and they have that safe, secure loading and unloading area. Then we have manufacturing, which will be about four thousand two hundred and ninety-four square feet, again, closed to the public with the employee entrance being used, and non-volatile extraction and gourmet edibles will be created. And then the third use is retail and delivery with that customer entrance that's facing the street for customers and the employee entrance that's on the side for the employees to enter. I'll get into a bit more about the uses on the following slide, so we can go to the next slide, please. All right, so I took the floor plan and just kind of put a little bit more detail on there so you could really see what we're talking about in terms of where things will be. The retail space is shown at the top of the screen as noted by the orange text, and you can see the retail customer entrance near the frontage of the property. And this is where security personnel will be located to check identification and paperwork before any individual enters the retail floor space. Delivery personnel will also operate out of this retail space as well. Any and all delivery orders that will be filled, will be filled in this space by dispensary personnel. Then the delivery driver will exit through the employee exit, entrance and exit, and then proceed to a delivery vehicle. The distribution area is also on this floor, and you can see with the purple writing kind of near the bottom of your screen. As noted on the plan, there's a roll-top door with the parking area inside at the bottom right. And like I said before, this allows vehicles to drive in and have secure and safe unloading and loading. The distribution area also includes many, or all of the state mandated areas for storage, batch sampling, and odor fulfillment. And then the last use on the first floor is that manufacturing, and that's all of the left-hand side of the building. The first floor manufacturing area is large, and it's going to include the areas for really the edible production that's associated with this project. So there's edible production space, packaging and labeling space, freezers and coolers, and dishwashing space, to name a few. Like I said, the first floor manufacturing area will be predominantly for edible creation and applicant plans to manufacture edibles like gummies and chocolates and other confections using the extracted material that it actually extracts on the second floor, so we'll get to that in a bit. And as I mentioned previously, there's this employee entrance on the right side of your screen that's labeled with blue and that arrow. Next slide, please. The second floor is a bit simpler, of fewer uses. Again, the left side of the building is going to be the second floor of the manufacturing area, and this will be primarily for the extraction-related operations. So this includes a workroom, extraction areas, storage, distillation areas, those types of things. And then the rest of the second floor will be used for things like break rooms, a conference room, locker rooms, bathrooms, and meeting rooms that can be used by employees. All right, next slide, please. So to get in kind of the meat of the operational details, first, the manufacturing and distribution uses have some things in common, rather, because they are close to the public. So we'll start with kind of the similarities. I changed the hours of operation in our presentation to align with what Ms. Tumians' request was for hours of nine AM to nine PM. So that would be for both uses. It would be closed to the public. There's a separate entrance, and all of the premises will be limited access, meaning no members of the public will have access. And as we'll talk about a little bit later about security, all doors and entrances and windows will be alarmed and require, you know, employees to scan in, and all access can be tracked in these areas. There's employee bike parking, and the goal is to have a compliant, safe, and clean operation in both areas. When it comes to distribution, what will be happening here is, you know, the general abilities of a cannabis distributor, so storage of product, facilitating testing, distributing finalized and tested products to retailers, packaging and labeling any flower that is legally able to be able to be packaged and labeled on-site and offering some transportation services where needed. And then the manufacturing operation will be non-volatile manufacturing with extractions and then edible creation. So for the non-volatile manufacturing, they'll focus on CO2 and ethanol extraction, and then with the edibles, it will be gummies and other confections. And next slide, please. So on this slide talks about the edible creation, or excuse me, the retail and delivery creation and that side of the business. And the operations here will obviously be a bit different than the other two uses, which are close to the public. Here, again, I amended it to be nine AM to nine PM. Customers that can come in have to be twenty-one years or older with a valid ID or a medical cannabis patient with a medical recommendation and an associated ID. Of course, there will be ID checked at the door before anybody's allowed to enter. There'll be no loitering or remaining on the premises once a purchase is made, so there shouldn't be an accumulation of people around the area. There'll be no consumption on-site, no customer access into any limited-access areas. Delivery personnel will enter and exit through the employee entrance and delivery to physical addresses in secured vehicles is what will be allowed. In terms of products that will be sold, Northern Standard is really seeking to be a boutique, high-end cannabis dispensary in terms of their retail operations. So it's going to be about quality more than necessarily quantity, although there will be lots of choices. Northern Standard will ensure that all of the products that it offers are of the highest end and, you know, meet all packaging and labeling and other regulatory requirements. So things like flour, manufactured goods, you know, any type of quote-unquote paraphernalia or live plants, only things that are allowed by the local ordinance and state regulations will be sold on-site. Thank you, and next slide. One of the great things about this property and this proposed project location is the proximity to public transportation. As you can see in these visuals, the proposed location is a three-minute walk and a one-minute bike ride from the nearest bus stop on Corporate Center Parkway. And because the applicant understands that having alternative transportation methods is very important in the city, they are offering that, those extra bike parking spaces to promote alternative modes of transportation. Thank you, next slide. Of course, an extremely important part of running a cannabis business is the site security. And when it comes to security, the applicant contracted with Crime Alert Security to create a security plan for the building. The security plan is detailed and multifaceted to ensure that the building is safe and secure at all times. Security systems will include an electronic alarm system, a video surveillance system, an access control system, security lighting, and then other various things that aren't necessarily strictly about the systems that will be in place, things like the fact that all employees will undergo extensive security training. A security guard will be stationed at the dispensary entrance. All employees will wear operator-issued security badges so that they can be identified at all times and access within that facility itself. So even once employees get past that retail storefront, you know, if they're working in the distribution area or the manufacturing area, employees will be limited in terms of their access in those areas as well, so that only employees that have a business reason and have been hired for, you know, specific purposes, if it's distribution, they're not allowed in the manufacturing facility and vice versa. All areas where cannabis is located will be under twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week video surveillance, and all recordings will be made available to applicable government officials upon request. Next slide, please. Now, when it comes to odor control, there's, you know, a few different things that applicant's going to do to make sure that the odor of cannabis is not detectable from outside of the facility. So the first is in terms of what they're going to install into the facility. So the applicant plans to install activated carbon filtration system throughout the entire facility, in addition to any air purification systems, you know, HVAC, things like that, to mitigate any odor and prevent it from escaping the facility. Additionally, Northern Standard will ensure that all cannabis is properly stored in sealed containers to limit the escape of any odor and ensure that the facility is maintained in a clean and sanitary way to further cut down on any odor. And the point of applicant's odor mitigation plan is that no one should be able to smell the odor of cannabis from outside the facility, and all of the things that applicant plans to do will ensure that that occurs. Next slide, please. Applicant plans to hire between eight and fifteen employees at the facility and will focus its recruitment efforts in the City of Santa Rosa and the greater Sonoma County areas. The applicant plans to cover its work schedule with full-time employees that are eligible for benefits as much as possible. The first three months of employment for all new hires will be considered a training and probationary period, and this is to allow all new hires to undergo the extensive training that's needed to ensure that all employees truly understand to ensure that all employees truly understand their roles, understand the rules of the company, understand state and local compliance requirements, and then also understand, you know, their ability to advance in the company. Once the initial three month employment period has ended, employees starting wages will be approximately $20. And this is in support of Santa Rosa's commitment to the creation of head of household jobs and sustainable wages. In addition to planned full time employees, part time employees will likely be required to ensure that all shifts are covered. But applicant is dedicated to hiring local citizens with a mix of full time and part time jobs, which will help maintain diversity in the types of jobs that are available in Santa Rosa and will lessen the impact of economic cycles. Next slide, please. So just a bit of general employment information. And when it comes to employment information, it's extremely important for the applicant that its workforce is diverse and that the work environment that it creates is inclusive and positive. As previously noted, applicants will focus its hiring efforts on the local community, pay living wages, and provide a competitive benefits package for eligible employees. And to ensure employees are appropriately trained for their jobs, applicant will also provide detailed training programs to all employees. Training will be ongoing to ensure that employees are up to date on all operating procedures, safety procedures, local and state compliance requirements, and company policies. Next slide, please. And one of the major focuses that I've been working with the applicant on is kind of the community benefits that Northern Standard will bring to the Santa Rosa community. When it comes to community benefits, Northern Standard is committed to being a good neighbor to the surrounding businesses in the Business Park and an upstanding member of the Santa Rosa business community. In order to ensure, to ensure, excuse me, the business benefits the community, in addition to offering a wide variety of safe, high quality, and highly desired products, Northern Standard will also do a number of other things, including offer diverse and inclusive employment opportunities, institute a good neighbor policy that involves providing its neighbors with the name and contact information of a neighborhood liaison or neighborhood contact that works for the company. And that would be, you know, if there are any questions or concerns or, you know, in, you know, little things, if there's a sprinkler that's broken or something and somebody has a question about it, you know, they can always call up that person, that person will be available to answer questions within 24 hours. And part of, you know, one of the bigger things is Northern Standard's community participation program. And this is a mirror of a program that they already have, they're already engaged in in Alma, Colorado. And what this involves is, you know, giving to organizations, giving to community groups or, you know, community efforts in multiple ways. So that's, you know, volunteering time, encouraging employees to volunteer or having specifically designated volunteer opportunities for the employees and management, monetary donations to such groups. That would be based, you know, likely a percentage or a set number based on profits. And then what we call swag donations, which are, you know, anything that these community groups might need. The main goal is to reach out to community groups, select ones that, you know, Northern Standard wants to support and then see what they need so that the program can really be individualized to what those groups need. And then, of course, offering a wide variety of safe and tested products from an experienced operator. Next slide, please. So this last slide is essentially giving a little rundown of how the applicant will be compliant and with local and state law. Now, of course, I couldn't put everything on this slide and I don't think you would want to read every single thing that they're going to do to be compliant because that would be a very long slide. But here are just some of kind of the basic things. You know, abiding by all age restrictions for retail customers and employees, because we have to remember that employees also have to be over the age of 21. Ensuring retail employees abide by applicable sale limits for customers, so not overselling cannabis products because there are limits on a state level. Only delivering cannabis to privately owned physical addresses, maintaining limited access areas where members of the general public are not allowed to be, and employees have to have legitimate business reason to be in there. Ensuring no cannabis is visible from outside the building, abiding by all track and trace and reporting requirements, which is a very important thing, especially on the state level. So that, you know, product can be tracked all the way from, you know, as soon as Northern Standard gets it, whether it be at the manufacturing arm or the retail arm, and knowing when that has been sold and moved through kind of the seed to sale process. Also, maintaining all necessary local and state permits and licenses at all times while operating. And then, you know, a list of other things like ensuring all security measures are taken, ensuring that, you know, the dual licensing requirements under the local and state regulations are followed, and just overall ensuring that it's, not only its facilities are compliant, but also its operations. And as an existing operator with a lot of experience as being a licensed operator in another state, Northern Standard is extremely well versed in the fact that regulations are detailed and that the only way to have a successful cannabis business is to have a compliant business. Next slide, please. So this wraps up the presentation. I thank you again for your time today. I know this has been a very quick meeting so far, so I'm happy to take any questions that you have. Yeah, please let me know.
Great, thank you, Ms. View. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant before we go to the public hearing? Hearing anyone ask? Oh, we do, yay, okay. Commissioner Okrupke.
Yeah, I have two questions. You guys are about 100 feet away from Sonoma County Youth and Children's Services. Have you guys had any contact or dialogue with them?
I'm not aware of any contact or dialogue that has happened with them to this point. But I will say that, of course, if the use permit is granted, there would be that community reach out, establishing a contact for that group to contact the applicant if necessary. And then, you know, taking any feedback if there's, you know, that could also be, you know, maybe one of those community programs that the applicant works with on a regular basis to do donations or any type of reach out that they need.
Okay, and then my second question is, I appreciate the local hiring of employees. Since this is ground up construction, will local trades be contracted to build?
Oh, absolutely. The goal is to, and the architect that they're working with is also, you know, local to the area. And a lot of the, you know, contractors and things like that, I believe, will be pulled from local artisans so that the project from start to finish buildup to, you know, actual operations is supporting the local community.
Vice Chair Weeks.
I have two questions also. I want to follow up on Commissioner Okrupke's comment about the youth program, the child and youth program that's nearby. What type of outreach did you do to the other businesses in the Business Park?
It's my understanding that the applicant worked with another unit, not my law firm, to do community reach out. I don't have the exact details of that on hand with me right now. I know that there was mention of calls being made. I don't, because I wasn't, you know, the person that was in charge of that aspect of the project, I don't want to speak out of turn and say something that wasn't accurate to you. But I do know that they have, you know, had the notices go out for the meeting and are really looking forward to working with all of the members of the Business Park, assuming that the use permit is actually granted here today.
Is there anybody in your team that's here today that could answer that question?
The owner, David Waschelfelder, is on the line. He may be able to give some more information about that. I can't speak to him.
I'm here, this is David Waschelfelder. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, so we did work with the owners association of the Business Park very early on to let them know what they were doing, sorry, what we were doing, and got their approval before we even purchased the property for, for the business.
Thank you. For me, anyway, it's really important that we know what kind of outreach that you have done to the neighbors. Then my second question is, when would you, if this is approved today, when would you anticipate starting construction?
Originally, we were intending to start construction in October. I am concerned that we've got a very short timeline before October arrives. So there is a chance that groundbreaking may be pushed to the spring.
Okay, any other questions before we move on to the public hearing? Okay, great, thanks. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the public hearing. Again, if you're a member of the public watching by Zoom, you will, if you choose to speak, you want to raise, hit the raise hand button. If you're calling in by phone, you want to dial star nine. That will allow the host to invite you to unmute when your turn is up and you'll have three minutes to speak. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask our host if we have anybody in the queue.
Chair Cisco, no one is raising their hands at this time.
Okay, let's wait maybe just another 30 seconds and see. Still no one.
Correct, no one is raising their hands at this time.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any other questions of our applicant or staff? Okay. Would someone like to read our resolution for the purposes of discussion? Okay, Vice Chair Weeks, good job.
Okay, I'd like to move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa approving a conditional use permit for Northern Standard to operate a cannabis adult and medicinal use retail in parentheses dispensary, delivery, non volatile manufacturing, and distribution within a new 9,994 square foot building located at 2220 Mercury Way, assessor's parcel number 035-490-032, file number PRJ19-035.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, so that was moved by Vice Chair Weeks, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Vice Chair Weeks, why don't you start, please?
Okay, so I, to me, this site is very appropriate for what you're proposing. Application was thorough and the fact that you are going to be having a variety of jobs and hopefully even construction jobs. I can make all the findings and would be in support of this.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Okrupke.
Yeah, I agree with Vice Chair Weeks. The only thing I would like to see is a little more outreach, reaching out to Sonoma County Youth and Children's Services. That's not going to preclude me from supporting this, so I will be voting in favor of the applicant.
Commissioner Duggan.
Make all the required findings and will be supporting the project.
Commissioner Peterson.
I also can make all the required findings. It was a very comprehensive project narrative. I think, again, it's an appropriate location. On the, I agree with Commissioner Okrupke, I think there should, some outreach should be done, but in light of other locations we've approved for retail sales, including across from the Family Justice Center, you know, this doesn't particularly trouble me as a location. And, you know, I would hope along with Vice Chair Weeks that, you know, the labor aspect of it, you know, the applicant does take that seriously. I know Teamsters have been active with labor peace agreements, certainly with other projects we've seen. So I'm hopeful that this will, you know, put some weight behind the intent of the cannabis ordinance to generate those head of household jobs beyond the scope of the land use aspect of this a bit. But with that, again, I think it was, it's a good project, it checks all the boxes and I can make all the required findings.
Great, Commissioner Carter.
I think my fellow commissioners have covered just about everything here. I want to echo Commissioner Okrupke's statement about additional outreach, even though none is required for residential uses. It's always good for the neighbors to know what's going on. And continuing to work with local community groups to identify those community groups that might benefit from their community benefits program is something I'd like to see continued to. But all said, I can make all the findings and support the project.
Great, and like Commissioner Carter, I think it's been said, I think this is a good project and a totally appropriate location. And echo the other comments of the commissioners asking for more outreach and I can also make all of the findings. So with that, the resolution was moved by Vice Chair Weeks, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. I will ask the recording secretary to call for our votes.
All right, we're going to go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner Okrupke?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weeks?
Aye.
And Chair Cisco?
Aye. And so that passes with six ayes, Fisher Collier being absent tonight. And I believe that concludes our business with this item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And staff, are we ready to move on to 10.2? Or do you want to take a break so that you can prepare?
We're ready.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 10.2, which is the Starbucks reuse conditional use permit. That is an ex parte disclosure. And so commissioners, I just lost you. Commissioner Carter, anything to disclose?
I have nothing to disclose on this item.
Commissioner Peterson.
I visited the site and have no other information to disclose.
Vice Chair Weeks.
I visited the site and have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Okrupke.
I've visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Duggan.
I've visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose on this item. So with that, we will move to the staff presentation given by Connor McKay, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Cisco and members of the commission, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, yeah, so this is my, actually my first item presenting to the planning commission, so I'd like to introduce myself. I am Connor McKay, city planner with the city who joined in January of this year. And the item I'm bringing to you today is 10.2 and it is an amendment to an approved major conditional use permit that would involve a coffee shop reuse with a drive through located at 2527 Gurnville Road. So this, I wanted to provide additional clarification on the project description than what is explicitly written here. But the applicant is seeking an amendment to an approved CUP which currently allows for a bank with a drive through ATM, which is classified as a drive through services. This amendment would allow for a drive through retail, which would consist of coffee sales and a coffee shop at the existing building. Additionally, the applicant is seeking to operate extended hours of operation than what is expressly allowed by the code. Proposed hours of operation would consist of 4:30 AM to no later than 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 5:00 AM to no later than 11:00 PM on Sunday. This is the location regionally of the project in the northwest quadrant of the city. And more specifically, it's on the northwest corner of the intersection of Gurnville Road and Fulton Road in the Fulton Marketplace Shopping Center. Here's some existing site photos, this is from Gurnville Road looking northwest, looking northeast. And this is from within the Fulton Marketplace looking southwest at the drive through. And you can see the ATM that exists there currently. And this is from within the marketplace looking east. Just a bit of project history, so in July of 1998, the property owner received approval for the operation of a bank with a drive through ATM. In July 2020, we of a bank with a drive-through ATM. In July twenty twenty, we, we received an application to amend the CUP to allow for drive-through retail at this location. The general plan land use designation is retail business services and medium density residential, a combination of the two. Additionally, the proj, oh, sorry, the, here are the descriptions for those general plan land use designations. Additionally, the Fulton Marketplace is identified as a community shopping center on the general plan, which is intended to provide commercial services to surrounding residential development. The zoning district is general commercial and the operation of a drive-through retail business is, is permitted with a conditional use permit at this, in this zoning district. Here's a description of the general commercial zoning district. Here's the site plan for the interior of the site. I understand we received a question about the NIC. So the NIC stands for not in contract and that space as identified on the site plan would be fully enclosed and not used in this project and it would be maintained in a building and fire code compliance manner and has been conditioned to do so. This slide shows the onsite traffic flow as it pertains to the drive-through. What is shown right now is the peak drive-through hour which would potentially result in nine cars queuing in the drive-through which would block four parking spaces temporarily as displayed here. And the project has been conditioned to include those four parking spaces as employee parking to reduce interruptions to the parking lot service on the site. So the applicant has indicated that there's shared parking throughout the shopping center, Fulton Marketplace. And one space is required per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of gross leasable space in shopping centers. So with approximately five-hundred-and-eighty-five parking spaces and one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet of gross leasable space, this would exceed the requirement of four-hundred-and-eighty-four spaces at the ratio I've just mentioned of one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Based on this analysis and the following historical imagery, Fulton Marketplace is anticipated to provide sufficient parking. I will now slide through a few of the imagery that shows the parking lot and there's some space as you can see. Staff can make all the required CV, conditional use permit findings to recommend approval, including the project being reviewed in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. This project qualifies for a class thirty-two exemption for infill development. A focused traffic study was reviewed by Traffic and Public Works that indicates the project would result in less than significant impacts to level of service and vehicle miles traveled. We have not received any public correspondence in opposition or support of this project. I do understand we received questions that from the Planning Commission that requested additional clarification about the NIC in the site plan and the project description itself. The original project description as written was focused on the new tenant as opposed to the existing project site and the need for the amend, amendment to the approved CUP to allow for drive-through retail. I'm totally happy to further expand on that question if needed. But with that, the Planning and Economic Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission by resolution approve this amendment to a major conditional use permit to allow the relocation of an existing coffee shop across the sitting, shopping center to operate the twenty-four-hundred-square-foot portion of an existing thirty-thousand four-hundred-four square foot commercial building that was formerly operated as a bank with drive-through service with those extended hours of operation that I mentioned before. And here's my public contact info if anybody has any questions or comments about this project. And staff is available to answer any questions and I believe the applicant has some comments to make as well, but no presentation. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. McKay and welcome.
Thank you.
Hopefully someday we'll see you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions of staff right now before we move on to the applicant?
I've got, I've got one.
Great.
I mean, I don't know that this is the, the best time and applicant may want to address this too. I, I'm trying to figure out some of the traffic study and how the vehicle stacking with the drive-through was, was kind of pulled together. I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble with, with the numbers that are there, at least as they, they relate. So the, the ninety-fifth percentile was set at nine cars, but the peak hour says it's going to be a hundred and nine trips with, with an average of a six-minute wait. So it sounds to me like there's maybe nine cars is a little optimistic in terms of stacking. The, the traffic study goes on to say that, you know, twelve cars or something is out into the parking lot and fourteen cars is back onto Gurnville. So staff or applicant, if you can kind of walk me through how that was figured out, because that's the piece of the conditional use permit that I'm, I'm kind of confused about.
Yeah, so I will talk about the queuing onto Gurnville Road and I will defer the traffic study question to the applicant if they can answer that. But as it relates to queuing out onto Gurnville Road, that was one of my main concerns initially reviewing this project. And I worked with Rob Sprinkle in the Traffic and Public Works Department and Carol Dugus to come up with conditions of approval that would require signage and striping to to require any extra queuing of cars to be maintained within the parking lot and not queue out onto Gurnville Road. And then regarding the traffic study queuing analysis, Jeff, would you be able to respond to that or maybe Clement?
Yeah, this is Jeff Halbert, the, the applicant. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. I believe we have Daylene who works with W Trans, our traffic engineer, who did the analysis with us. Daylene, are you available to respond to the questions in regard to the traffic study?
I am.
Please, please go ahead and, and see if you can answer the question in regards to the numbers. I believe it was related to the stacking.
Certainly. When we look at this, we look at only inbound vehicles. So in the peak hour in the morning, there are a hundred vehicles inbound based on information obtained at other Starbucks and we've actually counted traffic out of, out of Starbucks, the one at Fourth and Farmers. We found that about forty-six percent of people who come to the Starbucks during the peak hour in the morning are going to go to the drive-through. And, you know, based on the arrival rate, they don't all arrive at the same time. They kind of spread themselves out over the hour. And we also have some other data from, other background data, but we basically ran this through a spreadsheet that was developed to use all kinds of algorithms and, and things that are much more sophisticated than I would understand and certainly would be able to understand and, and explain to you. But basically, we have a, a spreadsheet that we've used all these algorithms to, to figure out how much the stacking would be and the probability that, you know, there's a ninety percent customer probability that a customer will wait. So that's not surprising at all. And we, you know, we did include the fact that people would wait about seven and a half minutes to get from the back of the queue to the front of the queue. But the ninety-fifth percentile of the total vehicles in the system was, was ten vehicles. So it really, it, it's about the fact that not all the traffic is, or not all the inbound, inbound traffic would be headed to the drive-through. It's, it's, it's based on as much information as we can find from having done data collection at other Starbucks specifically, as well as other types of drive-through facilities. Does that answer the question or? I, I know that's not very precise because there's a lot of, there's a lot of math that goes on behind the scenes that I won't even attempt to explain because I don't understand it myself, but, but this is something that we've, we've used queuing probability to, to figure out how, how long the queue would be. Most of the time, how much, you know, fifty percent of the time, ninety percent of the time. So we're really trying to take a fairly conservative approach and the, the ninety-fifth percentile queue is basically present only five percent of the time. So that's, you know, ninety-five percent of the time, it will be that or less. So it, it's, it's a fairly high probability that it won't spill over any further than what we've estimated here.
I guess, I guess my sort of follow-up to that would be, you know, so this particular project is going, I mean, there, there is an existing drive-through, but it, you know, it's a drive-through for a bank. So it's going from a Starbucks with no drive-through to, you know, a Starbucks with a drive-through. And I guess the, the question would be, you know, is there an issue of sort of inducing demand? You know, you've now got this retail services that's different than the bank services. You know, it, how is that accounted for in this, this traffic analysis?
So, I mean, in general, if people are going to go to a Starbucks, they're going to, they're going to get their coffee. They're going to do it in a place that's convenient to them. So for the most part, because there are already so many Starbucks in Santa Rosa and, you know, in surrounding areas, this is the type of use that tends to spread the, the demand around as opposed to creating new demand. I mean, there would be some new demand. Obviously, you've got new employees here, so they have to make trips that weren't there before. But for the customer base, it will generally consist of people that were, were already buying coffee, just maybe somebody else, somewhere else. But this is more convenient. So it, it, it tends not to introduce new, new demand. It's like, it's like you don't, you know, buy a car so that you can buy gas. You buy gas because you have to. So a new gas station doesn't create the demand for more gas in the city. Buying new cars creates the demand for new gas, but a new gas station may make it so that you can buy gas more convenient to your home or your work or wherever you're going.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's make sure that we're asking staff questions and we'll give the applicant. I didn't want to divide up your question because I think it would have been too complicated. So, but let's make sure that we're just asking staff questions right now because the applicant will get a chance to present and then there might be more questions later. Commissioner O'Krepke, you have a question of staff?
It's kind of a hybrid question as well. I'm willing to wait until after the applicant gives their presentation and then I'll ask my question.
Okay, great, thanks. Anybody else with staff? I do. In terms of our, the, the staff report, I get that there's going to be a thousand square feet that won't be utilized. I don't understand why. So if you could just explain what the reasoning is there. I see that it's been captured in our, in the resolution and in the, the planning division items. But why do they not want to use a thousand square feet or why is that not explained in the staff report?
Jeff, do you want to take that one or do, would you like me to?
If, if, if you're going to go to the applicant, I'll just wait and let the applicant.
Okay, no, I, I, he is expressed, he answered the question already, so I can just take a shot at it. And if he feels like he should add more to my response, he can do that during his time. So basically, my understanding is that Starbucks typically has twenty-two-hundred-square-foot cafes and they saw this site as an opportunity to operate an existing building that had a drive-through. So that would help them with their sales and their purposes, but they, they did, they are, they want to use the existing building footprint in a way that serves their needs. They don't need the extra space, so they don't want that space to be used for this project.
Okay, well, I might need to get more.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, Mr. McKay. With that, we'll go ahead and have the applicant do their presentation or whatever they're planning to do.
Yeah, hi, this is Jeff again. I don't have any graphics to display. I believe you've got an overall understanding of the project from the existing building. You've, you've visited it. You know, there's an existing Starbucks, you know, forty feet away. And it's their intention to try to expand their offering to include the drive-up window, which, as you know, has become important. You know, in the last three or four months as people try to get services from this, this type of use and other restaurant types of uses that have drive-up windows. And obviously Starbucks is seeing this happen, you know, across the nation and they're making an effort to try to add this feature onto as many stores as they can to remain relevant and, and provide services to the communities that they operate in. In regards to the space utilization of the thirty-four-hundred-square-foot building versus the twenty-four-hundred-square-foot Starbucks store, they've had the opportunity to use the building, thirty-four-hundred square feet. And they designed it in a way that they feel is appropriate for their functionality, for the cost that it's going to cost to build the store and the, and the ongoing occupancy cost associated with that. And so rather than build out a store, which they don't want to build out bigger, because that's not their, that's not the way they operate their stores. And this is a little bit bigger than their standard. It's twenty-four versus twenty-two. They have their standard plug-in, right? Every kind of tenant that's been around for a while has their standard floor plans and that's what they try to use. For operational efficiencies, they've wound up at about twenty-two-hundred square feet as being their sweet spot. And so they've used the space in a way to design their internal operations and that's left over some empty space within the building itself. Those empty spaces are not contiguous. They're, they're separated, if you will, and the total of those separate spaces is about a thousand square feet. It doesn't lend itself to using the space for anything else. Starbucks doesn't need it. No other tenant is going to be able to use it. The cost of building it out is going to be a lost cause because Starbucks doesn't want to pay to build out a space they're not going to use. And so it's going to remain vacant in code compliant condition per, for the, for the conditions of approval that Connor mentioned. And that's, that's just what happened. I mean, if the building was perfect situation, it would have been a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot building, right? But it's not. And so we're using it the best way we can to meet their particular needs. That is kind of the explanation for that. I also wanted to say how appreciative I am of staff having worked through this process in the current crisis that we're going through, having, you know, working from home and trying to communicate with us and Starbucks and the architects and everything. It's just been a learning experience. We've never done it before. I'm sure Connor hasn't done it before. And, but I do want to mention how appreciative we are of, of them working hard and being, being available and, and communicative through the process. I think there's kudos deserved on, on, on the level of staff there. And again, this is just a relocation of the existing Starbucks to use the drive-through window. If there's additional questions about the traffic, obviously we have Daylene from, from W Trans available to try to explain that. From my perspective, this particular location is on the western side of the city. So in, and as you know, Starbucks is busy in the morning, right? People get in their cars and go in someplace and they stop and get coffee. People from the eastern part of the city, or I guess you would call it east of this site, are very unlikely to go in the opposite direction, drive west to go through this drive-through when there's other stores to the east that they're going to. In other words, people aren't inclined to double back against themselves to go somewhere in a convenient fashion. They're going to head, head east, they're going to head east. And so a lot of the people that are going to this existing Starbucks are local residents in the area. They either go there on purpose to get a cup of coffee and hang out, do whatever they want to do, or it's somebody on the way somewhere. People on the way somewhere are coming generally from the west or in the general area, going here and then heading east toward the freeway. And so I think that has to be buried in mind that we're not really dragging people from the east here. It's really going It's really going to be the people that are going there now or other people coming from the west to go through the drive-through to head east. And I think that bears out in the traffic study that, that Daleen did for us. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have or explain what else is going on.
Commissioner O'Keeffe, you want to ask your hybrid question now?
Yeah, Mr. McKay, can you pull up slide number 17 in your presentation just for a visual reference? So this is my neck of the woods, so I'm very familiar with this shopping center. So if you're looking at the project site right here, my, I understand, the, the two things that concern me is that, from my understanding, only the queuing and inbound were studied. And then the assertion that westbound going east was, it's going to be a major factor. So if you're looking at the project site right here, across from it, you not, you also have a diner and then two that is open for breakfast early and then you have McDonald's just to the right. The two exits out of here are either the, directly to the right, which would be like 180 degree hairpin turn and then, or going left in front of the Ace Hardware, the diner that are right there. If you're headed east, west to east, those are the only ways to get east. You can't go anywhere else to get east. There's an, there's an extra exit out of past McDonald's and Rotten Robbie's, but that is a right turn. So south only and to go east, you'd have to go across four lanes, two turn lanes and the two through traffic lanes. So anybody headed east is going to go out of those areas. And anybody west is going out of there. Anybody that wants to go north has to go out those areas because those are the only ways to get those three directions from that spot unless you cross all the way through the shopping center to the other side of Taco Bell to get to a light to turn left and head north. And so my concern is that there's no turn lanes there. There's one lane in, one lane out. And so people trying to exit are going to have to, to go east or north are going to have to cross one, two, three, four lanes of traffic just to get to where they're going in a major thoroughfare of Gurnville Road. So is it, is it, is my understanding correct in that the outbound and the effect it's going to have on Gurnville Road for those leaving was not studied at all?
Well, let me make a quick comment regarding the exit from the project site. If you come out of the driveway or the drive-through, if you will, or come out of the parking lot and are heading east at that little intersection where the existing Starbucks is at, you can go straight, directly east through this intersection off your diagram here, past the IHOP and go straight out to Fulton and turn right to get to the signal.
Right, that's the one that I said was four lanes. So if you want to go east or north from there, you have, you have to go across four lanes to go east or go across four lanes and then do a U-turn at some point. So what I'm saying is the fastest way to go east and the fastest way to go north is to come out of that drive-through, do a 180 degree turn and go to the entryway right next to it and then turn left across four lanes of traffic. And so.
I don't necessarily know that there's, well, you know, I don't want to, one, two, three, I'm just looking at the aerial right now. But, that, you know, that seems to be the way I would go, the way I have gone is straight past the IHOP, turn right on Fulton and, and go through the signal either left, right or straight. Daleen, I can, I can possibly ask you if you have any comments on the exiting, you know, the impacts of cars exiting from this location. I imagine people are executing, exiting now from the existing Starbucks and, and Ace Hardware and all the other uses are having to get out somehow. Do you have any comments about that?
Just before that, my concern is with this is that you're tripling the, the amount of trips. It's not just what exists there now, but you're expecting to triple the amount of trips to that site. And then you also have a diner and McDonald's who also have peak periods. At the same time, you will have peak periods.
Through the chair, if I might, this is Daleen Whitlock. I, I would note that if you come out of the drive-through and go just to parking, parking aisles to, back to the west, there is a driveway out that has then access to a two-way left turn lane if you want to turn out to go east. So that's a little easier. I mean, there are, there are actually three driveways of out to Gurnville Road. So it's not, not everybody's going to be funneled through one. If you do want to go through the site to straight east to Fulton Road, you would, if to continue east, you would need to cross two lanes of, of traffic to get into the third, which is the left turn lane southbound. The, the thing to note about this is that because this is a morning peak hour issue, the traffic is lighter than it is in the evening peak hour when the other, you know, the market and the other uses in the shopping center are, are much more heavily used. So the traffic volumes coming out of there in the morning are already considerably lower than they are later in the day. And traffic on the adjacent road system is lower than it is during, later in the day. So I, I don't think that this is going to result in any kind of an operational, operational concern that's not felt more intensely during the evening peak hour.
And I just want to. I'm sorry, Chair Sisko. We do have Rob Sprinkle, so he's a traffic engineer. He's been able to attend our meeting. If you have questions for Mr. Sprinkle, he is available.
Okay, is, is this a time that, is this a question that you'd like to have Mr. Sprinkle discuss with you, Commissioner O'Keeffe?
I mean, my question is basically with all those concerns and issues and the peak hour businesses around it, has anybody studied the effect of traffic exiting versus just incoming?
This, this is Ross Sprinkle. I'll, I did look at that issue and similar to what Ms. Whitlock said, the, when you exit the westerlymost driveway, there is a two-way left turn lane to get into. And so you're, you're basically crossing, looking at just the, the one direction of traffic prior to getting into that two-way left turn lane before going in with the rest of the eastbound traffic. If you're, if you're going, want to go north on Fulton Road and, and I, I'm, I'm from this area as well and I do this all the time. I, I use the signal that at, up at the, at Apple Tree, I go through the parking lot and use the signal. And, and that's really why that signal was installed was for people who want to go north to utilize that signal to go northbound on, on Fulton Road.
So there's, okay.
You're finished with your questions?
Well, I just haven't got an answer. I mean, I, we looked at it, but there's been, it's not, it was not involved in a, in a traffic study of any sort. It was, we, we looked at it was basically the answer I got. Is that?
So from, so from, right, from, from, from the city's perspective, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's six driveways that I can think of just mentally and not seeing the whole picture of the whole area that enter and exit this facility. So it is definitely dependent on where that person is going to exit, in which direction, on which driveway they're going to use. It, it comes down to, it comes down to a lot of it, comes down to personal preference and how they're going to, where they want to go and where they want to leave the site. So if it's easier for them to use a two-way left-hand turn lane to go in the eastbound direction, then they'll use that driveway. And, and people, that's how people, and, and that's how I get into habits of, of using different, different driveways. So I can't say that everyone's going to try to do a U-turn coming out of the, the, the drive-through there to turn. I, I don't think a lot of people will do that because like you mentioned, it is a difficult maneuver. I think they would typically go to the, to the left and use the driveway on the westerlymost frontage. And, and to me, that is a, a better driveway to use. So I didn't look and see how the trip distribution of all the traffic entering may use the different driveways. But it wasn't a, there wasn't a concern from my perspective that one driveway would be utilized over an amount of another one where it would become an issue.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant or Mr. Sprinkle while he's on the phone?
Chair Sisko, this is Commissioner Doug and I have a question.
Yes, go for it.
It's kind of related operationally to the, what we've been discussing on the, on the drive-through. So if like Mr. Sprinkle says, the best move, you're exiting the drive-through, you'll turn left to exit at the westernmost exit of the, of the site. And I think Mr. McKay mentioned that there was some restriping associated with configuring this drive-through. Has, is the west, is the drive lane that's closest to the building, is that being restripped? Because it's, it's striped two directions right now. And I think, you know, traffic studies kind of look at best case and they don't actually go out and look at how people behave in real life. And I, I fear that there's going to be people stacking up headed southbound in this nearby drive lane, trying to cut into the drive-through line, not coming in front of the recommended employee parking area, but coming parallel to the building. So if that line stacks up, it'll be very difficult to make a left turn lane to exit the drive-through. And was any consideration given to that?
This is Daleen Whitlock. I'll, I'll jump in here. The stacking that we projected would not go, I mean, even if there were people just going around the building and they didn't use the area in front of what's being identified for employee parking at all, the stacking wouldn't go far enough north to block east-west travel on the north side of the building, if that all makes sense. I think that was where your, was your concern is that if they, they came, came in front of the building and stacked up there, that then that would, that queue would extend back into the drive aisle and, and block traffic from leaving the drive-through and getting back to the westerly driveway. Is, is that correct, Commissioner Doug?
I guess.
Okay, so the, the, the maximum queue that we projected was, I believe, 11 vehicles, which would not stack all the way around the building and block the road.
Okay.
The other, the other aspect of that, if I can mention, is that as part of the work that we're doing on the property, there will be, as, as you may have seen in one of the other illustrations that Connor put up, a curb adjustment at the entry to the drive-through, which would basically require you to come in from the, the west, coming in directly from the north there along the side of the building would, would make it almost very, very difficult for you to turn into the drive-through lane there. So that it's going to require you to kind of get in that length of the, along, along that east-west driveway there, just north of the parking next to the grass.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson, were you looking to ask a question?
Yeah, I, I was. So I, I'm trying to put a finer point on it and trying to keep it within this, this, the CUP findings that we're looking at. And I think what certainly myself, you know, I've had a lot of experience at that shopping center as well. And a lot of my fellow commissioners are getting at is, you know, is the site physically suitable for the, you know, type density and intensity of the use being proposed? And, you know, having been there quite a number of times, you know, the traffic is bad. You know, the way that that parking lot is laid out, where the McDonald's drive-through dumps you out, where that driveway from Rotten Robbie comes out, it, it gets pretty hairy in, in the, the morning peak hours. And I guess what I'm trying to, to figure out is, I got a good answer on the stacking question. I think, you know, certainly the explanation that, you know, there's, there's a number of new trips that will come, but not all of those trips will be through the drive-through. So that makes sense to me that, you know, where the 95th percentile of nine cars comes through. I think what I, I continue to bump up against is along the same lines as Commissioner Duggan's, you know, Kepke's questions is, you know, how is this not going to be a disaster basically in peak hours? You know, with, with this new drive-through that is a more intense use than the bank, you know? So that, that's kind of where I'm, I'm hung up on, on the conditional use permit. So those are the cards that I'm laying on the table. So if, if anyone has any particular thoughts on, on that kind of question or, or situation, that's, that's really where I am.
Daleen, is it possible to talk a little bit about the controlled exiting from the drive-through lane? In other words, people are, are staging on their exit, right? I mean, you're, you're going to the drive-up window, that guy leaves and then there is somebody at the drive-through window being serviced. And so there's a gap of time between the cars leaving the drive-through to get out and goes, go through, go to another store or go to one of the driveways in the shopping center. Is that the way you see it?
Certainly, there, there is a certain extent, and I'm sorry, this is Daleen Whitlock again. There is a certain extent to which the operation in and of itself will meter the amount of traffic that can leave. One of the things and part of the reason that the queuing may be even less than projected is we do our Starbucks offers, we do our Starbucks orders on our phone and then we just walk in and pick them up and we don't have to wait. And I think that's probably the, you know, as much the wave of the future as anything is that if you, if you can, you know, if you're willing to walk into the store, you, you order it in advance. And so, you know, people may be less likely to spend seven minutes sitting in a drive-through. But, but, but the drive-through does, does meter the traffic and even the ability to pick it up on inside, go in and order and, and then walk out with what you, what you bought, it, it's metered by how fast they can serve it. So, you know, with the, you know, as Rob Sprinkle was discussing, there are a number of different ways of getting out of this shopping center. And, you know, and again, I, I would just note that, you know, if you look at the drive-in bank and the amount of traffic it generates in the evening versus what this generates in the evening, it's, it's not a, you know, there's, there's a lot more traffic that's drawn from the nearby stream of traffic. So there's a lot more people stopping and making, making their purchase as, as, as a end route wherever they're going. I mean, 75% of the traffic in the morning is, is already on the street. These are not new trips. They're, they're trips that are drawn from people that would already be driving by on Gurnville Road anyway. Now, obviously, you know, as been pointed out by a couple of the commissioners, they're going to be turning in and turning out. But the amount of, of traffic onsite because of all the other uses, it is, would be so much higher in the evening peak hour than it is in the morning peak hour that I would expect that even with this intensification in use of the Starbucks, the total amount of traffic at Fulton Marketplace will be, will, will still remain well below the level that it sees in the afternoon. Retail uses just don't have a lot of traffic in the morning compared to the evening. And most of the, most of the rest of the site is, other than the things we've been talking about, the existing coffee shop. And so those other, there, you know, there are some other uses onsite that are more specific. But most of the rest of the site is stuff that's much, much busier in the afternoon. So I think even with this intensification of, of trip generation for the project, overall, the site will continue to have less traffic in the morning than it will in the evening.
Commissioner Peterson, is that answering your question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think is the bad design of this parking lot the fault of the applicant? No. And I think that the more detailed explanations we've been having about sort of flow, peak trips, vehicle miles traveled is certainly helping me.
Any other questions from the commission for the applicant, Ms. Whitlock or Mr. Sprinkle?
This is Commissioner Carter. I have one.
Sure, go for it.
The, the control that you do have to deal with the projected queuing is, requires striping and other changes to the parking lot. Yet the narrative says all the parking is shared. Do we have assurances that the owners of the property, the, the, the center in general will allow the, the necessary parking lot changes to manage the queues as you've proposed?
Yes, we're just talking about striping.
The striping and the dedication of employee parking. And also there's a dumpster in the, in the queuing area. How's that going to be dealt with?
Well, the dumpster is being moved into part of the building. We've talked to the recology people, the the recycling and dumpster people, and they've approved to use part of the southern end of the building for trash cans. And so there, we're, we're eliminating that dumpster location and, and reworking the, the entrance there at the driveway, the drive through entrance a little bit just to accommodate better, better access. But, but the parking spaces will remain the same. You're right. The striping or the lettering for the employee parking will just be painted on the existing. We won't be altering the circulation or the number of spaces at all. And so we've been working with Kimco, the property owner, and that's not going to be a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners, before we go to the public hearing?
Chair Cisco, this is Commissioner Duggan. I have one more question.
Sure.
Regarding the dumpster, I, I saw it on the site plan and I, I appreciate your moving it into the building footprint. But is there, like, what time does recology come through and empty that dumpster and access it? You know, typically in most neighborhoods, they come around pretty early, but that's when this drive through is going to be operational and most people are going to be using it in those early hours.
Yeah, they have, they have access to the door themselves. So they'll, they'll get into the door when, when they want to. We don't expect that that's going to be a problem. The doorway is going to be just to the north of the drive through lane in that, in that wide drive through area. And they're only going to be there, you know, five minutes at the most. And talking to them about the location of that with the drive through lane, they said they work around that kind of stuff with a lot of other restaurants of similar nature and they don't anticipate any problem.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on to our public hearing tonight. Again, if you're a member of the public wishing to speak and you are watching Zoom, you hit your raise hand button. If you're calling in, you hit star nine, that will enable the host to see you and he will invite you to unmute when it's your time to speak. You have three minutes. There'll be a little timer on the screen, which will tell you when you start and when you finish. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and open our public hearing. And ask the host if we have anyone with wishing to speak.
Chair Cisco, we have no one at this time.
Okay. Give it about another 30 seconds to see if anyone shows up. And still no one, Mr. Maloney?
Correct. No one is on at this time.
Great. With that, I'll go ahead and close our public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, is someone willing to read our resolution for the purposes of discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Thank you.
The resolution to planning commission, I moved the resolution to planning commission of the city of Santa Rosa, making findings and determinations and approving an amendment to an approved conditional use permit, CUP, to relocate an existing coffee shop across shopping center to occupy approximately 2,400 square feet and drive through an existing 3,404 square foot commercial building with proposed hours of operations of 4:30 a.m. until no later than 11 p.m. Monday to Saturday and 5 a.m. until no later than 11 p.m. Sunday, located at 2527 Gurnville Road, file number CUP 20-010, and wait for the reading.
Do I have a second? Somebody wave at me. Okay.
I'll second.
That was Carter. Okay. So that was moved by Commissioner Peterson, seconded by Commissioner Carter. Commissioner Peterson, you want to start this one?
Sure. So, I mean, we haven't had one of these for a while, but I think, you know, my fellow commissioners may know my, my thoughts on drive throughs. You know, I, I think that the applicant was able to answer the concerns I had about the increased intensity of use. I mean, there, there's sort of two things going on for me. One is there is an existing coffee shop. I mean, this is, the Starbucks is already there. The drive through is already there. And while it was a bank, so that, you know, the intensity of use was, was lower. There's not as many drive through customers. I think that in, in this context, based on what we've heard from the city of Santa Rosa Traffic Engineering, W Trans and the applicant themselves, that I think the use is appropriate for the intensity of use is appropriate for this conditional use permit. I, I don't think that this is perfect. I, you know, I think, again, the, the parking lot itself is, is, in my view, badly laid out. There's, you know, you make a right out of that drive through, you're into a drive lane, keep driving straight, you're into the McDonald's exit, keep driving straight, you're into the Rotten Robbie exit. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a tough parking lot to navigate. I think that people will find a way around it. I, I think while there's kind of an absence of information on what traffic patterns would actually look like, I, I think, you know, I, I will defer to the city of Santa Rosa Traffic Engineer and, and rely on their expertise in this context that it is not an issue that's significant enough to sink the conditional use permit aspect of this. That was really my concern with, with this project was, you know, the increased intensity of use and, and getting a better understanding of that, the way that the drive through would actually function in practice. So with the explanation we've had, I think all the other findings I, I can make and with the, the explanation, I can make that additional finding. So I, I can make all the findings necessary to support this project.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Carter, how about you?
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. I think you summarized the situation well and like, I agree, it's not perfect, but I can make the findings and will be supporting the project.
Commissioner Duggan?
I'll also thank Commissioner Peterson for his comments. I, I don't think it's perfect. It, it's a sort of really bad parking lot in all sorts of respects. And I can make all the required findings.
Commissioner O'Kreppke?
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson summarized it pretty well. The thing that just keeps eating at me is that with the traffic study, there's a, it's, it's part science and part behavioral science and it's behavioral science portion of it. It's given me a little bit of trepidation. As, as Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner Peterson said earlier that it's, you're looking at what you expect people to do, but you're expecting people to do the most efficient, wisest thing, and that's not always the case. So I was sitting kind of on the fence on this, but you know, I think while it's not perfect and there are other options, I'm going to hope for the best and I, I will be supporting the application.
Vice Chair Weeks?
How can you follow Commissioner Peterson? I, you know, it is not the best, but I think for what, for what is there, it's, I, I can make all the findings and I will approve the project.
All right. And I also appreciate Commissioner Peterson's analysis and very well spoken. That helps us a lot. And I also can make all of the findings. So with that, I will ask our recording secretary to call for our votes.
Again, we're going to go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Kreppke?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson? Vice Chair Weeks?
Aye.
And Chair Cisco?
Aye. And with that, that passes with six ayes, Commissioner Colia being absent. And I believe that concludes that item. Again, welcome, Mr. McKay. Good job. And I believe that concludes our business tonight. So I will go ahead and close our meeting and adjourn to our September 24th meeting. As I understand, our September 10th meeting will be canceled. So with that, another good job. Bye. Bye.